Oh, I need my binder. We need our binder today, don't we?
If you want to take notes, I guess there are copies of stuff in the folder.
Sorry, sorry guys.
Commissioner, whenever you're ready.
It's 9:24 AM and this work session has been called to order. Chris?
Yep, this is going to be me. And I know the agenda said, you know, Sunshine Law and Ethics and stuff, but it's a little more expansive in terms of the different parts that I'd like us to focus on today. And I think it's very timely, given that at the, the community coffee meeting we just left from, I understand someone expressed concern about requesting meetings with commissioners and why they were asked to schedule those with the commissioners instead of being able to reach out on a one-on-one basis. So I think I, at least I hope after this part of the session today, that y'all have a better understanding of what some of the primary pitfalls that you may experience in your tenure as a commissioner under certain state laws requirements. So. Okay, Colorado Open Meetings Law. Here's the thing is when you think about a meeting, usually you think of things like right now. We're in a meeting. We're sitting here face-to-face. But the Colorado Open Meetings Law, which is also known as the Sunshine Law, essentially declares any type of communication between the three of you subject to being deemed a public meeting and open, that should be open to the public essentially. So whenever you are discussing public business of any form and your definition of public business is going to differ, probably differ among the three of you as well as the members of the public. So some of the practical aspects of the training today will be to try to help you navigate those challenges in way that'll keep you from being headline news or being the topic of the day on, like the Vajamoon or whatever. Okay? But anyway, and some of these, you know, I've put some kind of cartoons in there throughout this presentation, not, not just to lighten it up, but also to, to kind of draw attention to the fact that yeah, this is often how it's perceived by the public, how you all operate. You know, the fact that y'all have three offices and those offices have door between. Everybody presumes that y'all are having secret meetings. If you want to grab lunch together, they're going to presume that you are talking about county business when you're at lunch, even though you might be talking about ski conditions. So part of it is the optics of how y'all are going to engage your role as commissioners. So again, and, and I think each of you, you know, to some extent talked about during your campaigns and all about, you know, how you want to give essentially more access to the public for the information to be more transparent. Because there is an inference, whether it be accurate from my position being not, that there isn't transparency in the way county government is operated. And I hope you'll learn as you go through this process of the one morning and through the initial, at least, you know, three to six months of your tenure, that we do a lot, everything we do, we try to make it available to the public. There are some things that that's either not statutorily able to do or not practical to do. So let's try to, so we'll go through this and I'm wanting to try to be as transparent as possible. So if you have questions, you know, obviously let me know. So again, the, the bolder part of this, the quote from the code is that any, you know, quorum of three or more members or two, two is quorum and that's y'all, of any local body, which means it's, this doesn't just apply to y'all. This also applies to like Planning Commission and the appointed boards and the school district and city council. You know, those type of things, local bodies are pretty broadly defined, so. And then that's why I'm saying any board commission, advisory decision-making body, when you're sitting, not just as commissioners, but as a local licensing authority, the Board of Health, the Board of Equalization, the other types of boards that you see listed there, the Airport and Recreation Advisory Boards, those are all considered local bodies that are subject to the Open Meetings Law. And this is, I think, I hate to say, kind of the perception of what I think a few members in our community believe that by the time you show up in a meeting, you know, you've already made your mind up on things. And that's, that's not the first, especially when you're engaging in your role as a quasi judicial board, when you're reviewing certain land applications, things that, that would have entitlements and, and other type of interests and rights with the applicants. So again, a meeting is broadly defined under the Open Meetings Law to be any kind of gathering convened to discuss public business in person, by telephone, electronically, or by other means of communication. So text messages can be considered public meetings, as it's noted. Emails, you know, your emails, if all three of you are on an email and you're talking about something pertaining to county business, that's considered a meeting. The most important thing to keep in mind about those aspects is that all of those elements are also subject to QARA, which we want to talk about as well. So all of your emails, and we mentioned a little bit about it yesterday too, whether you do it on your county, you know, electronic equipment or your personal electronic equipment, because of your role now as an elected official for the county, it's subject to disclosure.
And make a note on the, the second paragraph there, like the chance meeting. So for example, you know, the mayor had invited the new commissioners to meet and greet with city council on the sixth, February 6th, right, to meet with city council. So we endeavor when we do the weekly planner to add as many of those things as possible. And that we always see in that language, talked about a little bit yesterday. You know, the commissioners may attend. You will see, you know, for regularly posted meetings, decision-making meetings, work sessions, commissioners will attend. So we want to be, you know, as transparent as possible, like Community Coffee this morning is always on the weekly planner. You may attend. All three of you might show up. None of you might show up. And that's okay, but we endeavor to have those things posted so people can see that.
Yeah, and that's part, part of that too, is we mentioned before too, and mentions here that the county's not the organizer of the meeting. And you go, it's not subject to public posting because you're not there as an official. You know, you're not there as the commissioner to discuss county business type thing. But again, if it's something we know is coming up just for awareness and so they can't say, oh, well, all three commissioners came to Community Coffee down in Twin Lakes. I know they were probably talking about county business, not our meeting, you know, we're not responsible for that.
But perception is what you're, but perception is also a problem.
And that's, you know, that is the biggest, I think, challenge that y'all might end up facing because you all had lives before you ran for office and got elected commissioner, which means you know a lot of people in this community and they're going to want to have access to you and they're going to want to make sure that, you know, you see on the slide where it's like, we talked about conflicts of interest and stuff, that the whole purpose in their eyes sometimes is, I developed this relationship, I have this good relationship with this commissioner, so I should be able to use it for a purpose that I'm passionate about. So that's, that's something that you'll have to try to navigate in a diplomatic way. And I think, you know, you've, you've worked hard to do that in the first week of your tenure.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's more I actually want to, want to show you at some point too. So just to, you know, educate myself.
All right, so Open Meeting Law, meaning open to the public. That means, as we mentioned yesterday, publicly posted 24 hours prior to the meeting. If any formal action is going to be taken, then minutes must, must be, you know, taken as well. The meeting must be recorded and opened to public inspection. That's why work sessions, you're not supposed to take any formal action in work sessions because we don't have the clerk and recorder here taking the minutes in order to make them a part of the public record. The agenda and packets, the information goes into the packet. In, it says open to the public, there may be some small instances, limited instances, where items for executive session, for example, might not be put into the packet in advance of the meetings, depending on the sensitivity of the discussions we have in the, the public meeting in the executive session. So that's, that's part of the exception. And that's a case-by-case basis that will be vetted by the county attorney's office in terms of what should be disclosed to, to the public for those type of things. Also, people are allowed to ask to be on our list, to be notified of, of meetings and such. And I know that previously when the clerk and recorder was responsible for doing all the posting and all, they had their own special list of people who would receive that information. And you had to specifically request can you be on an email group that that information will be sent to.
Does that still exist? I get not with the clerk and recorder, but do we have a list and stuff?
We have, so folks can, the public can sign up on our website to join.
Oh, that's one of those lists.
Yeah, various listservs. And the tricky part with that is, is right, so we can, you know, we can do a sign-in sheet in the room. Folks put their email addresses on and stuff, but if they don't actually consent to get our emails or like put it in themselves, we can't really like add it. So we do, I think Sammy does a, it's either monthly or maybe like a quarterly push on social media and other channels of like to, hey, you want to get notifications and updates from the commissioners, Planning Commission, other things. There's various lists, the, the news alerts, weekly planner, agenda packets, all of that. So we try and get folks that way as well to, to sign up.
But it's not, I mean, it's available to everybody. Now, it's not subject to discretion by somebody whether or not they're going to add you to their list. Okay, executive sessions, and that's, as we discussed a little bit yesterday as well, the code is very specific as to the circumstances that can be used to call an executive session. You have to specifically cite to the statutory provision that you're calling the executive session and that at least two-thirds of you have to agree that you want to go into the executive session. That's why there's a motion made and, and addressed prior to you going into executive session. And the topic, both in terms of the agenda, you know, what's posted as to the open meeting stuff, the code says that you have to provide as much detail as possible without essentially encumbering the purpose of the meeting. So you have to give as much specific information as you can without disclosing what might be confidential information or such. So in most situations, unless it's something routine, whenever y'all ask for an executive session, I will provide the language for the agenda and the packet and stuff for that to make sure that we comply with that statutory requirement, make sure the proper code is quoted and such. And then again, as we mentioned, executive sessions have to be recorded like your other regular meetings unless it's part of my advice and counsel to you and certified as protected by attorney-client privilege. So that's not all the time, but that's often, you know. Because at, at least in the past, most of our commissioners have, have felt, and I agree, executive sessions should be used in a limited way. They should be for things that you receive advice and counsel to not specifically disclose to the public at that time because of the sense of nature of the item or something. It's not something that you should just routinely decide you want to have an executive session to talk about something before you talk about it in, in public. So we use that sparingly. And then also the privilege, you can waive the privilege. Attorney-client privilege belongs to the county. If the three of you decide that something we've talked about in executive session, you want to disclose to the public, you can do that as a board. You cannot individually decide to waive attorney-client privilege. So if there's something we discuss in executive session and you go out and you talk about it to someone else and then someone comes and says, we want to QARA all that information from that executive session, you haven't waived that attorney-client privilege, only the board can do that. If you decide you want to waive that, we will have a very robust discussion about the import of attorney-client privilege in order to make sure that you are knowingly waiving that privilege because once it's waived, it's done. And it's done as to that topic overall, not necessarily just to that conversation. So that's another thing that you want to do sparingly as well. And again, anything that y'all discuss in executive session that's subject to attorney-client privilege, you really have to think about. Attorney-client privilege means that you shouldn't disclose it to anyone outside of the board and your attorney. And so that means even if you go home and say, hey, this isn't for public consumption, you can't really talk about this, and you discuss this with your family and they inadvertently share it with someone else, that's still your responsibility. So just have to be very, very cautious about that. Again, exceptions. So the Open Meetings Law is not applicable to the day-to-day oversight of the property or supervision of employees by county commissioners. So your one-to, one-on-ones or if we, you know, if, if you end up wanting to have regular operations meetings or something like that, just to talk about the internal operations of the county, those aren't subject to the Open Meetings Law. We can do that. But you cannot do it in a way that, for example, we get into an operations meeting and then you're asking, well, what's coming up on the next meeting? We start looking at an agenda and you're like, oh, yeah, I really want to talk about this item on the agenda because that's where you trip into the territory of, well, now it's something you're talking about county business that should be open to the public. So there may be times we get into meetings like that that are internal meetings or whatever and you'll start down the pack and I would be like, we need to stop, we'll put that on the agenda. You want on a work session or, you know, Tim will do that too, Lauren will do that to say, you know, this is something that really we need to talk about in a different circumstance. Instead, we're not being rude, it's not, I want to talk about it, we're just trying to help y'all, from tripping up over these type of things, which is really easy to do. Also, if God forbid, we go into another situation where meetings need to go electronic because people can't be in the same room with each other, that's allowed. So you don't have to personally be here. And there might be circumstances where y'all have other obligations or something like that and you want to zoom in for the meetings. That's allowed, you can do that. There can, it's considered you being in person, whether it's you here live and breathing or through electronic means. So the other thing too, and this is an important aspect because you'll run into this a lot, open to the public does not mean open to public comment. There is no requirement for you to offer public comment. But it is something that's highly encouraged that you do to demonstrate public access to you and, and your process essentially. But one of the things that's challenged for the chair often is you do the initial opening where anybody have public comment, you'll be given three minutes for items not on the agenda. And then we'll start into items on the agenda and people will be waving their hands for, they'll start interacting and, you know, saying, well, you know, that's not right or whatever. The chair's job essentially is to manage that meeting too. So there is no obligation again, that y'all give access to public comment. That's within their discretion, so.
Unless it's a public hearing.
Unless it's a public hearing, yeah. So if there's an emergency that comes up, you don't have to, that's one of the exceptions to the 24 and advanced, 24-hour advance notice is that if you have an emergency, qualifier breaks out and interlocking, you might not have 24 hours to convene a meeting to talk about, you know, activating resources and stuff like that. But when you do need to take that emergency action, it needs to go on, on the next agenda and we'll make sure that happens to ratify any actions taken at that meeting so that you have it. Disrupted behavior and protest. Rarely happens, thank goodness here, might happen more in the future, who knows? But there's a balance that you have to strike between folks who have a First Amendment right to express their opinions on public property and what is truly disrupting or being an obstacle to the public process of y'all doing your business. And so you can, if somebody does come to a meeting and they're being disruptive, you can ask them to leave. And even though I would not recommend it, if there's any concern that it may become violent, please do engage with the sheriff's office, but you want to try to avoid escorting people off of public property because then that's what typically triggers some sort of a claim or their violation of their First Amendment rights. Open Records Act, the bane of my existence. I, you know, there are certain laws on Colorado's books that I would love to go back and find the folks that helped write them and slap them around a little bit because they did not think through the consequences of some of these. QARA is one of those. QARA essentially is, is enhancement of the Open Meetings Law in that it also deems that, you know, that public records are open. You know, any records of y'all doing your business should be open to inspection and review by the public. Again, it's one of the transparency aspects. And it's, QARA applies to records, not documents, okay? In terms of, records are not just documents. They are any type of record, which means electronic, the recordings of your meetings, your text messages, your emails, anything, anything that can be collected essentially, whether they be in paper or electron mode, if you will. So, but they have to pertain to the exercise of your functions. So for example, you know, someone can send a QARA request that says, I want any of the commissioners' emails between this date and this date. Pretty broad, but that means that if you use your email to order lunch, that's disclosable under QARA. One of the things that we help to manage that is that the code allows us to charge a reasonable fee. And it's specified by statute, it's like $41 or something like that an hour for staff time. Doesn't fully pay for it, but if somebody submits that broad type of request for QARA, you know, for documents, typically what they get back from us, and there is a centralized email now. It used to be all QARA requests would come through the clerk and recorder's office. She's not processing those anymore, so now we've set up a centralized public records email address. They submit it through that email address, it automatically comes to me, to Melissa and to Sandra, for us to essentially take in the process, review them, determine if it's one of those situations where there's an exception under law for what they're asking for or if it's so broadly worded that, like typically what happens is I'll get in a request for all records related to a specific address in the county. Real estate agents are really loving QARA because they're using it to do like advanced research on their listings and stuff like that to kind of know if there are going to be issues with the property. So they'll say, all records related to that. Well, if it's one of these 1880s houses, those records could be huge, voluminous. So typically I give them anything like that, I send it down to Ann's team and I say, please let me attach a QARA request and let me know how much time it's going to take you to fulfill this. And then if they come back and they say, well, gosh, this is going to take me a week, I would go back to the person requesting said, staff advises that it's going to take them 40 hours to compile this request. Here's what it's going to cost you for the 39 hours above because they're entitled to, if it's less than 10 pages or less than an hour, we have to provide it for free. Okay? But anything over an hour or more than 10 pages, we get charged for it. And that's one way we've been able to manage because typically what I say is, it's going to take 40 hours unless you would like to refine your request and be more specific. One of the reasons I do that instead of, and I take it to face to face. So whatever they put in their QARA request is what they're asking for. I don't presume or I don't interpret it to limit it anyway. And one of the reasons for that is we only get three days to process a QARA request. Unless there is a justifiable basis for us to say, we cannot complete that request within three days, then we're allowed to extend it for an additional seven. But overall, the maximum is 10 days to process and it's not 10 necessarily business days. Even though if you send me a QARA request today, our three days don't start to run until tomorrow. So the day we receive it doesn't count and starts the next day. But even so, most of the time, I let them ask for it. I'll get with staff and say, how much time is it going to take you? If they say it's going to be more than an hour, we'll go back to them and say, this is what it's going to cost. And you have to pay a deposit of the estimated staff time and expenses before we start working on your request.
Nice.
So essentially what they do is it buys us more time within the confines of the code, but it buys staff more time because we get a lot of QARA requests and it can be very disruptive for our departments to have to drop everything and compile all these records.
How many do you get, I'll say?
Oh, so in a sense, excessive QARA requests can end up costing the taxpayers dollars.
A lot of money, yes, it does. Now, some of the things, there's been legislation proposed each year, it'll come out again this year. Last year, one of the things we've run into has been folks who, they'll submit a QARA request today for one item and another one tomorrow for another item, all related to, you know, whatever their interest is. For some, our policy, if you read, we've got a specific form and policy for QARA that says, any requests received within a month are going to be deemed to be one request. So that they can't, because they were killing us with just multiple requests, one after the one, you know, and that kind of. When we get into election season, it really goes crazy because there are a lot of organizations who went, I want all the recordings, you know, of the drop boxes and this, that and the other. Unfortunately, there are exceptions in there that we can say, we'll provide them, but not until after the election so that it's not interrupting, you know, the process and such.
That 10-day clock starts ticking as soon as they put their deposit in or is it as soon as they make the request?
No, it, they make the request, so whether it's three or 10 days, our timeline starts the day after. Because what, the reason for that is, it is the date end, 11:59 at night. So if they send us a request after normal business hours, then essentially you've lost a day. So that's why it doesn't start to run until the, the next day after it's received. And received has been litigated, that word. When did you get it? When it came into your email or when you opened that email and saw the request? We had some issues in the past where if, for example, the clerk and recorder was out of the office and no one had access to her email and QARA requests were coming in, we weren't getting them until they were already passed through. So that's why we decided to centralize this so that it would be more than one person that we're coming to and there would always be someone be able to pick those up and do something. So.
How many do you get, Chris?
It depends, they come in waves. But I would say we get several, at, at least several each week that we process. And depending on the nature of the, when we get into prime real estate season, we get a lot because again, the realtors are using that as discovery for their listings, for their buyers and all that kind of stuff. And then for litigation, you know, their lawsuits pending, not necessarily just with the county, but to property, somebody buys a property and feels like there was inadequate disclosure on the property, that's when we get these QARA requests because they want to have an additional avenue of discovery, if you will, that they don't have through court rules and stuff. So, you know, it can be pretty gross.
So is it mostly real estate?
A lot of it with land use, a lot of it with financial stuff, especially this last year. A lot of requests for financial information. We do an RFP and who, you know, all these people put in bids and somebody didn't get selected and they're not happy and you don't even know why, they QARA all the documents related to that RFP, the bids that were, you know, taken in and all that kind of stuff, the decision-making process. So it just depends, you know, on the nature of what's going to be. But the routine ones, most of them are land use or financial. All right.
We've endeavored more and more because it, some of the QARA's inform, like if they're routine things, they will aside from the real estate ones, but more and more information available on our website. So it's easier to direct people of like, here.
It's already available.
Yeah, this is already available. And then from there, of course, they refine their QARA request, which is fine, but.
Yeah, yeah. So that's one thing we do too, is if we get a QARA request, then we'll be like, here's the link where you can find it, you know, so we don't even send that to the staff, to the departments and stuff. If it's something we know is on the website, we just say, here's the link to find it. One thing too is that, like I said, record is broadly defined. So and I've put in here, every scrap of paper, you know, and I hate to say this, but back in my, my life as a litigator, when I was defending claims against employers and, and other entities and stuff, I would guarantee my clients that whoever is bringing the claim will have kept every scrap of paper they ever got or had access to. they ever got or had access to during their engagement with that entity. Nothing different with the county. So they broadly use, we tried last year through the County Attorneys Association to advocate for more refined regulations for COR to kind of narrow some of that down. So they wouldn't be able to essentially use it for that purpose, that they'd have to stay within the court's confines. And until the legislature does something else, that, that didn't pass, so the court came out this year and said, "The legislature will find that it'd be more restrictive for better defining what's available." You're stuck with this pretty much. So, um, and, and keep in mind too, it's like just your notes, you're making your notes. Unless you can protect it as what's called work product. So if we're working on new code, perhaps code provisions, you'll see a lot of that coming up. And you get drafts of those. Those aren't necessarily subject to COR at that time, because they're work product. They are, and, and stuff that we create for you as drafts, just for your review, that might not be subject to COR. So one of the things, another reason why we developed the centralized way to respond to COR requests that they all come in and are vetted by the County Attorney's Office, is because we did have instances where someone would come in and say, "Hey, can I get a copy of?" And whether it be to a commissioner or another elected official, well, they'd say, "Yeah, I've got this." So it's not going through the process. And you don't have to play lawyers in your spare time. That's why you have attorneys on staff, so that if you're unsure if something's subject to COR, please ask. And we will, we will review it and let you know whether, yes, it is, or if it's, you know, something that can be defined as work product. The other thing too is if we tell you, yes, it would be subject to COR, that doesn't mean, okay, I'm going to give it to them. You know, I had a conversation with Jeff Thielor about that, because he was like, "Well, somebody came in and asked for a copy of something I had laying on my desk and I was just going to make a copy." You really don't want to do that, because you also don't want to set precedent that people can get records that way. That's why you have a defined policy and procedure. And if people don't like that, they're like, "Well, I saved them right on the desk to say, it's the county's policy and procedure. I'm, as an individual commissioner, not authorized to accept from that policy and procedure." They hated, but that's just, it's, it's to protect y'all as well. Um, so yeah, here we go in terms of the timeframe, um, the extenuating circumstances. We have to document what that, the circumstance is. For example, if staff, you know, they make a broad request and staff says it's going to take forty hours, we have to specifically tell them that. Um, some other exemptions, uh, this comes up, this is substantial injury disclosed. We get a lot of public records requests through the sheriff's office as well. Now, there are two different laws, there's COR, the Colorado Open Records Act, but there's also the Criminal Justice Records Act. And that, that applies to any records having to do with official law enforcement or prosecution functions and stuff like that. So there are different, different aspects that apply to those, different timelines and such as well. And, but there are instances where we've gotten requests for, um, records in civil process. Divorce, child welfare cases and stuff like that, that we might use that substantial injury of disclosed exception to say, "We're not going to provide that." A lot of that has to do with, um, child welfare issues, if they've done interviews with the kids or something like that. So this is very broad and why you need to take each COR or GRJA, um, request and, and look at that. Again, attorney-client privilege, or as I mentioned, work product things that aren't the final version. The other thing too is in terms of keeping your records, and one reason I bring this up too is, I know that each of your predecessors probably lost, left some files in your office or something like that. If they did, please segregate them. Do not commingle them with your records. Make sure that you have them in a separate drawer or something like that. And I see anyone who have already done that or something.
I have so much stuff in my office, I've.
That has already been left. And if you don't want it in your office, if those are the records, we can archive that for you. We can put it somewhere else so that you don't have that risk. But there might be topics that will continue after, you know, from your predecessors that will continue to today. Start fresh with your own file on that. Do not commingle into those, because then we get a COR request and the timeframe's in there, it might be difficult for staff coming and say, "Okay, well, what is subject to this request and what isn't?" So.
I'll put time into separating everything from two eras.
Can we, so when Sarah left, she said that she had everything separated from her stuff and Kayla's stuff and Jeff's stuff. So I just want to, I do think it's valuable for us to be able to like see those resources.
Yes.
Right.
Can you, do you mind just checking with Chris about, you know, making sure that it's good? Or putting it somewhere else, just, I don't want to lose those records.
You know, nor do I. I'm wondering if there's a way we could all go through it together and separate it into, you know, once we make our appointments, decide who's going to handle what, maybe we split all that stuff up, like, oh, this, this applies to what you're going to be working on. This applies to what you're going to be working on, and we take all that stuff and separate it out so you guys could have a previous administrations files for things that are relative to which, I don't know, like.
Yeah, I don't care how it's.
My suggestion maybe is we get a file cabinet to put all that in so it's accessible to all three of you, but it's separate from you.
I mean, we could put it in here or something.
I wouldn't put it in this room, but there are other places, we've got, you know, places we can store it otherwise. So all three of you would have access to that information. Because my concern is if you start taking bits and pieces out here and there, where do you find it? I, and I'm just being selfish, saying for court purposes, I'd much rather it be in one centralized place, all of the past records versus split amongst, so I have to come, if this year you're, you're appointed to this thing, but next year you're appointed to it. And then because COR requests aren't contemporary timelines often, they could go years.
Right. Okay, so what, what I was looking at is a couple of days worth of going through that stuff is probably now a couple of weeks worth of going through that stuff.
And I, I wouldn't hear, my suggestion is, can we find them on file cabinet that we can put?
There are entire cabinets.
Yeah, you, everything's, well, mostly, um, and I started just kind of separating through, like, I don't think I'm going to need this anymore, but, you know, like the big piles for the recycling bin, um, but, uh, I don't, I don't really.
Please don't, please don't, right now, as new, please don't decide what you need to retain yet, because you might inadvertently get rid of something that, and the issue where this comes to bite us, and it has in the past, is where somebody does a COR request and we provide what we can find and then come back, and especially if it's in relation to litigation, they come back and say, "Well, my client has this document and it wasn't included in your disclosure. Why?" And we're like, "We can't find it." Which then in litigation gives an inference of what they call spoilage. Meaning that you have destroyed records that may pertain to the matter. And if you do, then if it goes to trial, the judge will give an instruction that essentially says, "Jerry, you can presume that this was destroyed because it had damaging information in it."
Who, who can I get to help me go through this stuff? Because it's really, I'm grateful to, uh, the, um, previous BOCC for keeping what they did, but I can't make heads or tails of how it's organized. Um, so if, you know, if I can get a hand, someone to go through that stuff with me who can help me.
Sure.
Get it.
I, I would hope if it's just an administrative, just organize it for you.
Yeah.
I mean, I might have some time with Sandra or somebody that might be able to help with that. But if you need help interpreting it, um.
It's, there's so much, I, I'm, that's going to take years to, you know, learn about every page of everything that's in there. Right now, I'd just like to get it in a shape that's more easily discoverable by you guys, you know. If we need something, then we'll be able to find it instead of.
Or if you, yeah, so if you need something, you can find it without spending days or shuffling through everything to find out where it is.
Right.
So we can try to, um, I don't know if we can find, if it's, but, and the reason I ask, if you need somebody to help interpret what's in there, I can see if Melissa, the Deputy County Attorney, has some time, that she can come over and go through it with you.
Sure.
To have take, because she helps process those as well.
Guaranteed they're going to see stuff that like, you know, this is magazines from nineteen nineties, like you don't need these things, you know, but that's, uh, but yeah, at the same time.
And the, the other thing too is COR only applies to things that we have in our possession or that, that essentially we have created. So magazines, if the reason it was retained because there was an article about something, you know, the commissioners were working on, that's not our work product.
Right.
It's magazines, so you don't necessarily have to.
Yeah, there's tons of brochures, flyers, promotional material for services we may have been interested in in the past.
Okay, I'm just making a note, so we can kind of put our heads together and figure out who might be the best resource to help y'all with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I know there's a lot in my office, but I'm sure there's stuff in your guys' office as well, but.
Mine was fully empty.
Whose office did you take?
I have the smallest ones, there's not enough room to put stuff.
I was, you know, maybe.
Do you get a rolodex?
I did get a rolodex, but that's not, I still have it.
That's a record.
Yeah, I have it. I'm not getting rid of it.
No, so.
I'm curious which numbers even still work in those things.
Everybody's scanning out business cards, what are you doing?
Yeah, I like to have a rolodex.
Yeah.
Right, you get your own.
Yeah, might be. Typically you scan those into something too, you can get a little scanner that'll scan business cards and they go into your contacts. So you don't have to shuffle through your rolodex, you can search for it.
Okay.
Might be better, just a suggestion. I like paper too, you'll see I have books and electronic stuff, I'm trying to get rid of the paper. Um, alright, and so again, any of COR requests, they, they go through the County Attorney's Office just so that we have the opportunity to review them, redact information that's not subject to disclosure, exclude documents that aren't subject to disclosure. And when we do that, we have a statutory obligation in, in, in County Attorney's Office. It's the one that provides the response to the requested. So that way we know it's been vetted and also so that if we do exclude information, we statually have to tell them why. It's been exclusive, we have to, and we have to, for some things that are privileged, we have to create a log so that we identify the nature of the document without the contents of it, so that they know why it's being excluded. So there are a lot of moving parts with that, and that's why all COR requests have to be reviewed by our office. Um, my favorite, this is the, this is the thing that I just feel that most commissioners struggle with the most. Um, ex parte communications. And so this pertains to items that will come before you that are subject to, to public hearing. Um, and sometimes even if technically it's not at the public hearing stage, if it's something that you know, um, will come before you. You know, we have a lot of land developers and building stuff who'll say, "Well, no, it's not, it's not ex parte. If I want to come and talk to the commissioner about my plan to, to build this development, because I haven't submitted an application yet." Technically, the letter of the law that might, might, we're being accurate, but it is a huge bit of fall for you. Because invariably what's going to happen is, and, and one of the reasons whenever anybody has an idea or wants to pursue discussion about a potential land use development or whatever, the first thing you need to do is ask them, "Have you talked to Anne and CPD about this yet?" Because if not, you definitely want to start there, because it could be they come and have this idea of what they want to do and they talk to you about it. And then you send them down there and you're like, "Oh, it sounds like a great idea." And then they find out code doesn't allow that. Then you're going to be faced with somebody who's going to be very upset, because they'll be like, "Well, the commissioner said this is a really great idea, something we should do." And what that's going to end up triggering is probably moratorium on ideas like that, because we're going to have to change the code. And it takes several months to change the code. So it's not something as simple as you say, "Hey, this is a good idea." And I say, "Sorry, you can't do it because the code doesn't allow it, but let's change the code." Okay, here's, here's the timeline for that. So, um, my suggestion, whenever anybody comes and wants to say, you know, "Hey, I just bought this parcel of land," or "I think the county should buy this parcel of land and let me develop it," or whatever, which happens a lot. Um, please direct them to go see the land use people first, so that they can help navigate that. So they can identify, are there code issues and are there infrastructure issues? And especially if the county is being asked to partner on development and stuff. So that you get ahead of it, because what will happen is if you don't, you have that conversation with them and then CPD says, "No, you can't do that," then you're going to come and be very unhappy, either a public meeting or you personally, and say, "CPD is gatekeeping, keeping us away from y'all because they don't, they don't want to do this." They don't want to do that. Not that the code doesn't allow it, but they personally ask that shit. So it's for your protection as well as to protect your staff and the process that we need to go through with that. So even though technically it has to be something that's formally in front of you, my recommendation is if you even think it might come before you as a commissioner, try to avoid those communications.
They talked about that at CCI a lot, and the different, there was one lawyer there from Weld County, was it? Who was talking about the, the commissioners, what, like court? You know, if you, if, if somebody thinks that you experienced, participated in the ex parte and you can get reported to this commission of commissioners.
Yeah.
Who determine what your fine is.
It's an ethics violation.
Right, and he said that it was, that the, that you can get reported even for the perception of ex parte. And he said that it was just a mess. He called it a kangaroo court.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he said you just don't want to be there.
And I'm sorry, even if it's, even if it's your friends who are like, "Hey, I know I'm with this organization. Can we set up a time for us to communicate and talk about that?" And if they say, "Well, yeah, you know, I just want to talk about skiing and conditions or something like that to go out and recreate." If you do that, you go, now, just because y'all elected and maybe you don't have a social or personal life anymore, you do. But you just have to keep in the back of your mind how your role now influences your interactions with your social circle. And so accept those invitations to go ski and do this, that and the other, talk about conditions. But when that conversation turns to, you know, I also wanted to mention, I saw so and so. That's when you have to have the restraint to say, you know, appreciate you bringing that up. Why don't we, you know, set up a work session or something to discuss it? So that it stays within the framework of, of what your official duties are versus your personal life. The other thing too is, I want y'all to have personal lives. We don't have balance lives. But we want y'all to, to stay healthy and engaged and stuff and be able to enjoy time with your friends and family and, and such. So you have to develop that kind of just initial action, saying, "Hey, I'd love to talk to you about that, let's do this." So it protects you and, and over time, people will understand, they'll come to understand, "Oh, I get it now." It's not because you don't want to talk with us about it, it's because you're kind of constrained in how you can talk with us about this.
And yeah, part of those, you know, business cards that Anne and Lauren gave you yesterday are just a good way, you know, to say it of like, you know, "I hear you, but I really, you know, can't talk about it, because there is a process in place." Um, and it does start with staff. And that's not saying too, as you talked about with code change, like, so you guys learn the code and know that and be like, "Well, that's really annoying, we should change that." That is totally within the purview of the board.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, and that can happen, and that's a okay. Takes a while to do, um, government was designed to be slow and deliberative, but you can change the code. Um, and another point I think on, is we, we worked through like the board retreat in February and gleaned more and more of the priorities from the board. We have, um, you know, staff representing you guys and your priorities, like for land use applications. So for example, we created the, um, construction development team, which is a whole host of partners. Sanitation, Parkville, Human Services, Public Health, Prose, Goal, um, Housing, all of that. I sit on it as well. And we see somebody's application or their sketch plan or their ideas or what they want to do with the parcel. And then that's where, you know, I sit as kind of representing the board, being like, "So here are the commissioner's three priorities for land use. Whatever, it has to have open space. You have to have a certain number of affordable units. Um, it needs to, you know, fit into the charm of the community, whatever, those kind of things." So as we work getting your priorities that way, it is communicated through staff to developers and land use applicants of the board's priorities and what you all want to see. So they, they know that going into it, um, off the bat. And they change their sketch plan or their application and that based on that feedback. And it works its way through the process to the first public hearing at, at plan and commission.
Nice, that's awesome. How long has that been in place?
Um, we started that in twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so ex parte communication, and a part of this is because of the quasi judicial role that you play. And that's when it comes to especially land use matters, there are property interests, constitutional property interests, vested interests that they have in their ownership of the property. And, and so the legal base of the Fifth Amendment, you can't problem with life, liberty and property without due process. And due process is the statutory and regulatory and code provisions that say how this application is going to be handled and how it's going to be addressed. Um, the Fourteenth Amendment, um, also. Um, the Fourteenth Amendment, um, also supplements that in terms of that's typically more applicable for individual interests than an entity. You have a developer, that's an entity, a company that's going to do something. The Fifth Amendment is is more likely to apply than the Fourteenth Amendment because that's typically directed towards individuals. Um, and the the whole thing is that the the reason you want to avoid ex parte communications is essentially they're they're not fair. You know, if you have a friend who has a personal interest in development for a campground or whatever, and they come in saying, let me talk to you, what do you think about this? And they share that with you, they are doing that to influence your future decision making. But they're also excluding your colleagues from getting that same information at the same time. And so that's why I always encourage if somebody wants to talk about it, get all three of you together. And then it's a public meeting. Now, a lot of developers aren't gonna like that because there's competition. And so they're not gonna want to disclose their plans in a public hearing necessarily, or a public meeting if it had been fully vetted and it's not nailed down because somebody listening in through Zoom or in this meeting say, you know, that's a really good idea, I'm gonna do that too. So that also tempers expectations, um, in terms of you saying, no, I'm not going to do that, you have to go through this process. And again, encourages them to go through the staff review process first before getting involved. Because the other thing too is, they may come to you with an idea that is really great and you really support it and you have these communications. And then you get to the hearing and you have to recuse yourself because you had that communication. Please don't do that. We saw that in action, you know, last night at city council in terms of having a city council member, you know, you wear different hats. And if your employment role is with building something, um, that's going to need land use review and such, you know, you having to recuse yourself might come on different levels and we'll talk about conflicts of interest too. But if it's something that you're not directly involved in, it might be this idea, this planning, this sketch, no developer, no builder has been engaged to build that yet. You could end up being excluded from participating in it at all because of these initial conversations about it. So it's just, there are a lot of pitfalls.
There are a lot of pitfalls and I'll give you like a, why it is challenging. Um, I would suggest, we'll just use an example and we'll use Texas. Texas doesn't have a lot of land use codes or regulatory codes for land use. So you've got developers from Texas who purchase large tracts of property in Colorado. They say, I want to do this. Colorado law provides different than Texas law does. Say, well, no, we have land use codes, this is Lake County's codes that its elected leadership has decided on for the benefit of that. So that's where sometimes you will get developers who, they just don't know, right? It's like, no, you gotta, you gotta work through the land use process. Well, in Texas, we don't have that. We can only not. Texas.
Yeah, no, that that's a very good point. And the one thing, another reason why this is important is not just the fairness aspect, but also if that developer comes with that idea and they go through the vetting process and they're turned down.
Mm-hmm.
They are more likely to sue you to say that you made an arbitrary and capricious decision in relation to their vested property interest. And so, all of these potential pitfalls have real life consequences for the county. And we work really hard to keep from spending any of our taxpayer money on litigation. We really do. So, alright.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So, um, so what we learned at CCI was that you have to disclose any ex parte communication you've had.
Yes.
And that oftentimes, that oftentimes, that disclosure allows you to continue because you've made it clear in public record.
That's correct.
And hopefully what you're disclosing is that you, somebody approached you and that you said, no, thank you, here's the process.
Yes.
But when, like, who decides whether that ex parte communication allows you to continue or not? Or does it, or can you not?
Target is, it depends on what level, if it truly falls into a conflict of interest category or whatever in their guidelines for analyzing those. Y'all decide essentially, if it's a conflict, if you feel that ex parte communication rose to the level that it may influence your decision, even if you say, you know, I I know, or, you know, I talked about this development with them and, you know, they want to build, you know, fifty housing units and I'm a home builder, so it makes sense that they would talk to me about this. The inference is gonna be that, wow, this is self feeling, you want this to go forward. So the the unfortunate thing about quasi judicial roles too is just like any real courtroom type scenarios. Somebody's gonna be unhappy at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna have the ones who want it and the ones that don't. And whoever doesn't get their way at the end of the day, they may find a reason to blame or be for that. And even if you say, I had this conversation, haven't been engaged, don't know all the real plans and stuff like that, I feel like I can be impartial. If you end up voting against, especially the citizens that don't want the development, they're gonna say, well, the team is already in your pocket. So it's, a lot of this is avoidance. Avoidance of putting yourself in that situation, but if you can't avoid it, then yes. Just make sure, and and part of it too is especially if it's so far out in front of when the application may come before you, please make notes. You know, I I usually say, if y'all are talking about something, don't write it down. But if it's something you have a conversation that you may need to remember, make a note, put it in your file for future reference. Because if it comes up a year or two later, I don't know about you, I often can't remember what I did yesterday, let alone the contents of a conversation a year or two ago. So those contemporary notes help remind you so that you can more fully disclose and be accurate about the nature of the conversation.
So let's say one of us had ex parte and we disclose it. And, um, we feel like we can make a judgment, but the other two commissioners don't agree. Does, do the other two commissioners get to decide that that person can't participate?
They would request that you not, I don't think they can tell you you can't.
They would request.
But they would request that you recuse yourself based on that disclosure.
Cool.
I'm hoping we don't have to have those conversations.
And you can't, you can't, as an attorney, you could like advise.
Yes.
But you couldn't stop that person from participating in the quasi judicial.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. I don't have any decision making authority. But if that issue comes up and two commissioners are like, I'd like to hear from the county attorney as to whether they feel this qualifies as a conflict or something like that, then yes, I will give my opinion, but that does not mean that you have to recuse yourself. The pitfall of that is if you don't, again, it doesn't go somebody's way and they sue.
Yeah.
Then that's the first thing they will say, well, even two others questioned whether it was.
It all makes sense, I just wanted to know the wonky part of it.
Yeah, and it's, a lot of it's a case by case basis too. If you inadvertently have those kind of conversations and just call me and just say, you know, I just had this conversation and I'm thinking back on it and I'm wondering if perhaps I should have done it differently.
Yeah.
And we can have that conversation about it, okay?
Hmm. And should we tell you an email or should we reach out to you?
Reach out please, and call me first, and if it needs to be memorialized in an email, I'll probably do that for you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Great, thank you.
Okay. You seem concerned.
Uh, I I'm just thinking about how small and tight knit of a community this is and how
Yeah.
between the three of us, we probably know seventy-five percent of the people in this community.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's, it's extra tricky for us.
Yes, it is.
It's like, man, like it's, someone involved with just about everything we do is is a friend.
Yes.
So, um, this takes on a whole new meaning here than it does in a place like, you know, Brookfield or that, yeah.
Denver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it is, it is hard. Hopefully, your friends and your acquaintances realize that, that, you know, yes, you now are an elected official, but there's a whole host of things that statutorily define your role. Um, and that makes it hard.
Well, and people think of us, people think of us as representatives. And that's just a, like, they think that they, that commissioners represent the people, like on a local level, but we're such a different part of the government, that there's like also an education piece that helps people. But I think that it's a common misconception that we're representatives and we're actually not.
Right.
So helping people understand what part of the government we are and directing them to the parts of the government that they could actually be speaking to on that topic, I think is also our goal.
Yeah, I'm checking.
And hopefully through this, these work sessions, I'm not saying that everyone in our community is gonna watch these or buy a review of those slide decks or any of that, but, um, we can, we will continue to communicate kind of that role of commissioner, and it is, it is a challenging role, right? It's like, you know, any of the other elected officials can basically talk about anything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but their statutory duties are vastly different than yours.
Yeah.
Every time I turn around, there's someone saying, oh, it's such a hard job. I'm like, okay, I'm.
Isn't that encouraging?
Right, yeah. I'm like, you know.
Thanks, Fred.
You haven't bothered with work already, yeah.
Narrative and be like, you know what, I dig it, it's month for this, I signed up for it, it's gonna be awesome.
These are just the legal standards in terms of why this is important and why it makes sense to not engage in ex parte communications because of the unintended consequences and how they can impact, uh, the you and manners that come with it. So, I want to talk to you, talk about that. Oh, it's like this, yeah. As hard as it is, and and I know what a struggle this is because it happens with me a lot. You know, I was raised in the South and I had a very different mother who was taught me manners of if somebody's talking to you, you don't interrupt them, you listen, you actively listen and then you engage. The problem with that is you're gonna need to be somewhat, just say, as soon as you hear them going down a path that could cause you, just say, hey, thanks so much for bringing this up, would love to talk to you about it, let's, that's in the notes. And they'll be like, but but, no, so that's, yeah, you can't, can't go there. Um, and then also, you know, it's like engage, the other thing too is, we hear a lot about people alleging in this community that y'all are trying not to engage, that you want, you, that's, you know, you don't want people to hear what you're doing or you don't want, no. This is how you encourage them to engage in the process, to be engaged, to be able to be an active role in y'all's process. Um, and so, you know, again, it it's kind of like, do it diplomatically, but just say, you know, hey, would love to hear your thoughts on this. Can we set up a time for y'all to come in and and share it with my colleagues and I, you know?
Cisco has been doing this with me, you know, for years now.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I have to say, it's been so fun to actually learn the hows and the whats and the whos about ex parte because now I finally am like, oh, now I understand why you've been treating me like, you know, like you've been an ass to me.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And I get to do it to you.
Um, conflicts of interest, I love this cartoon about this, uh, uh, because it's so typical, you know, and it it happens a lot here because like Henry just said, y'all know everybody. And if there, there are a lot of people that do good work in our community, it doesn't mean we don't want to use them, but you have to be careful about your relationships with them and how engaged you are. And so, um, Colorado does have a code of ethics that applies to y'all, um, performance of your duties. And so, um, you know, it has, it says it's, you know, it's not a conflict of interest to have an opinion, that's not it. Conflict of interest is when that opinion or your actions on that opinion may benefit you in some way, either directly or through associations and and that type of thing. So, um, you know, the conflict of interest arises when you have an opinion on something and you act on it in a way that may personally benefit you. And and the difficult part about that is determining what is a personal interest, how how are you gonna personally benefit? Well, you know, it could be that there's a developer who wants to do something that you think is really not a good idea for this community and you and your friends are turning, oh, no, this would be terrible for the community or really don't like it. Um, and so the the hard thing with that is being able to acknowledge, when you have a personal reaction to it, you know. As an attorney, you know, first, first thing in law school, the first thing they tell you essentially is that becoming, becoming a lawyer is essentially putting, being put on a a woodlake, you know, and you're spun around, spun around. And it chips away a lot of aspects of things that you brought with you. Most people would say your humanity, your compassion, all the things that relate to that. But what it does is it, it, at some level, you need to learn that whatever comes before you, you have to disassociate your personal reaction to it. Your filter always has to be what is in the best interest of this community. That is your mantra now, what is in the best interest of this community overall, not your reaction to what they're asking for or did it in your personal, so. Um, any direct financial interest. Um, and this, you know, y'all, y'all might have assets and land holdings or whatever that you bring with you. One of the things that keeps me back in my mind is if you have plans, especially if you own land, you have plans to develop that land in the future, to be cautious about how you're addressing similar situations.
Hmm.
You know, because people will know, and trust me, there are a lot of people out there who have Googled everything about you, who have looked at all of your information on the assessors database, and they know what you have. And they will not hesitate if they don't like something that you're looking at and the way you're approaching something to allege. They want that because they also own this piece of property or whatever. So that's, again, I hate to say this, but like eighty percent of the conflict of interest stuff is the appearance of it.
Mm-hmm.
It's not the actual conflict. And that's, that's what typically comes back to haunt you because they will screech you in, you know, social media and stuff if they feel, whether it's accurate or not, that you have a conflict based in a personal interest that you have in the matter in front of you.
How far back does it reach?
Could be a long time, it depends. I mean, it it could be, you know, something, for this analysis, my suggestion would be what's your current holdings or situations or whatever your business interests are.
Yeah.
Um, and I say this and and I think Matt, you might be the one that especially with land use stuff will get the brunt of some of that questioning because of, you build houses, that's what you do for a living, you know? Um, but it just depends on the nature. That's another topic, that if there's something coming up and it's something where perhaps you've expressed an opinion in relation to either that or something similar in the past, let's have a conversation about it. So I can help you perhaps navigate. And maybe the best approach to that is saying, well, this happened twenty some years ago, nobody's gonna know about it. Somebody will find it. And it might be better when it first comes up, just say, you know, hey, I just want to acknowledge, you know, twenty years ago, I was involved in this organization, whatever, and this is what we thought. I'm going to mature, you know, some of some of that difficult conversation aspects of it.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if it's something that's gonna be controversial.
Like, it's, it's basically financial stuff, like it doesn't really gonna apply to volunteer positions or anything like that. If you've been on the board of a certain, you know, local entity or something like that, but it was, you know, there was zero dollars being exchanged or anything like that. That's kind of gonna get pushed aside. We're gonna focus on like, did you ever need to gain from this materially or, you know, monetarily?
Exactly. Yeah. Or did you express opinions on something that the public feels colors your view of what's before you now? That's how it often comes up too. And that's why it's, it's not easy to navigate these type of things. And like I said, y'all had lives before you became a commissioner, okay?
Yeah.
And so there may be things, or y'all still might volunteer, y'all still might participate in community organizations and stuff that may have opinions adverse to things that come before you, that you make a decision on. And you could end up deciding, well, no, this development is in the best interest. Doesn't mean that I'm not supportive of this nonprofit's activities anymore, whatever. But in my lens now of what's in the best interest of the community, this is the way I have to look at it. You kind of have to set that aside.
So if I've been a member of the curling club for ten years, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from any decisions of making a new curling facility or something like that?
I don't necessarily know you have to recuse yourself. It, my suggestion would be to say at the beginning of any agenda item addressing curling interest, I've been a member of this, or I was a member for ten years, whatever. That doesn't mean that you can't participate, do your job as a commissioner.
Yeah.
But a lot of this is about acknowledging potential conflicts.
Just being open.
Yes, being open, being transparent about what your life experience is that may be perceived to inform how you're addressing it now, isn't it?
It's like when you go to a jur, Chris, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm imagining, have you ever been gone to jury duty?
No, I never.
Oh, okay. They like ask you, they ask you all sorts. They like ask you, they ask you all sorts of questions about your background and your experience, to see what kind of biases you might be bringing to the table.
Mm-hmm.
And through that, they can decide whether they want to allow you to remain on the jury or whether they want to reject you as a jury member. Like this is, this is kind of like that, right, where you're disclosing, hey, this is the experience I'm bringing to the table. And I'm still going to sit on this jury.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because i- in all honesty, as a recovering litigator, I want people who have life experience with the things that I'm presenting to them, because they're gonna understand it. And so, that informs it, the the challenge becomes if your experience colors your impression of it, you have to work really hard to set aside that, and again, look at it through the lens of what your role is now.
Right, it's also your own risk tolerance, like what is not a direct financial interest.
Yes. Yes.
But if you do make a decision about curling or the motor track, or say you're in Abbott, I don't know, Hunter, and you use the archery, whatever, like how much are you willing to handle a mention of that if people are like, that's gonna be your own personal tolerance, if what you're willing to.
All three subjects that I participated in coincidentally.
I agree, I I will, no, there's zero. Maybe, you know, finance, like there's there, we don't give them funding, but they're still benefiting from
Yeah.
county land, so you're gonna have to make that call.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, in my head, I I do place a value on the recreational.
Mm-hmm.
Well. Yeah, it's just it's, it's it's more valuable to me than money, you know, being having these things, so it's kinda like I have to figure out, you know, have have deeper conversations and figure out where lines can be made or where they should be.
Mm-hmm. Again, yeah, cause it's not like you can disassociate your part like before, but you may initially.
Right.
It's just, it, most of it is awareness and being transparent, disclosing what your your heart interests were, and stuff like that, and also, again, one commissioner does not afford me. So even though you may feel very passionate about something, if your two colleagues don't agree with you, that's okay, the majority. And so, that's, you know, that's just something that y'all will have to think, cause that's gonna happen, there'll be things that one of you is very passionate about and the other two being like, oh, do we really wanna open that can of worms or whatever? Those are discussions you can have, not together outside of the public, but again, especially with things that you feel might have a a decent reaction from the public, definitely use your work session process to vet that out ahead, because that way you can come and have, in work sessions, you don't have to take public comment.
Right.
You can have the conversation amongst you and air those things.
Yeah.
And and that, what that does is that helps remediate, in some instance, the perceived conflict of interest. Because you are telling the public, you're telling everybody.
Mm-hmm.
This is my past experience and how I relate to this.
And the more controversial or hot button the issue, the more transparency we wanna add to everything, just in, you know, conjunction.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Chris, is now an okay time for you to give us, to walk through an example I'm thinking of in my head?
Certainly, I can try.
Okay, um, you know how Sarah and Sterling bought that property out by the pipeline?
Yeah.
Can you talk through, like I wasn't involved, I only know that they purchased it, can you talk through how that was handled and like how you had were you weren't even here there?
To my, well, now, I was just saying, that just because they own the property.
Yeah.
To my knowledge, um, nothing has percolated up to the level where commissioners would have concerned anything.
Would be decision, okay, great.
But if something, if Sarah was still in that seat and June Sterling decided that they wanted to go and develop them, they brought it through the entire. Um, there are a couple of ways to approach that, number one is that, how is it owned? Is it owned by an entity or is it owned by them personally? If it's owned by an entity, they can designate somebody else to speak, to present on behalf of the entity.
Mm.
Needless to say, Sarah would have to disclose, have had to disclose, if it was coming up for a decision with the planning commission or the OCC, she would have to disclose that she had a financial interest, and my hope is, she would have said, I'm not participating in this because I'm one of the owners of this entity that owns the property. Okay?
Okay.
Um, that's hard, I don't know if any of y'all are in that situation, where you have things that you might wanna develop within the next four years or whatever. If you do, let's have a conversation about the best way to navigate that.
Mm-hmm.
Because there are ways you can approach it. Just because you have the interest doesn't mean it's a conflict necessarily. It depends on how it will influence or has the potential influence, how you address that matter when it comes forward. But my recommendation will always be, if it's something that you do have a personal financial ownership interest in, that you not participate. And that means not participate at all, meaning that you leave the room when it comes up on the agenda, or if there's a work session on it, you don't attend. So as to not give the appearance that you're trying to influence your colleagues in any way.
And you said, just because you have an interest does not mean, can you repeat the last part of that sentence for me?
Just, it's not an automatic conflict of interest.
Okay.
Okay, just because you have an interest is an automatic conflict of interest. Cause there are also a number of situations in this community where people might own minority interest. Where they don't have a say in how that company is run or what it does with its assets or anything like that. The key there will be saying, if there's a matter that comes up saying, I own a minority interest, I don't have any authority over this or whatever. Because the, again, it's how it's going to be interpreted as to your ability to use your position as commissioner to advance this outside entity interest.
And how how direct are you with us when there is a, when there's a perceived conflict of interest or when there is a conflict of interest and you like, do you specifically say in the public meeting, like, hey, I want to make this moment to advise you to recuse yourself, or what do you do? How's your process?
My grand hope is that you, as an individual, if you think there may be a conflict of interest, we can have that discussion one-on-one.
Sure.
Outside of a public meeting. So that can help you.
But. Yeah.
Identify whether or not it may qualify as a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And I can give advice and counsel on how to navigate that.
But if you have given advice to one of us, that we have a conflict of interest and we should recuse ourselves, and you've done that privately.
Mm-hmm.
Do you then, but they don't. Do you tell us publicly if somebody on the board has a conflict of interest? Like, would we know?
I was gonna say, i- if it rises to that level where a recommendation has been made, that a commissioner recuses himself because of what has been deemed a conflict of interest, then I will go on the record and say.
Okay.
Just for the benefit of, you know, public scope, cause again, keep in mind, I'm not your individual lawyer.
Right.
I don't represent you independently.
You're protecting the board.
I I represent the board.
Yes.
And so, I have an obligation to share the board information that may compromise.
Okay.
Its operations.
Okay, good.
So, stay. Alright.
Thank you.
So this is just to say, conflict or I, we've already talked about this, what your steps might wanna be. Do we need to take a few minute break before we?
I just have to pee real fast.
No, that's fine, that's fine, just uh i- in terms of what the next step should be. Um, and this is, this is kind of the, some examples, oh. Somebody's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm listening.
But anyway, so this is just some examples, um, uh that I gave, you know, in terms of for impartiality, you know, you have, and you two council membership and commissioners, um, opposing issuance of massage parlor, member A actively involved, wrote an opinion piece in the newspaper urging the public to oppose, and member B limited involvement with organizing the petition. Number A, because they took an active role in imposing it, should not participate in a review of that permit application. Just organizing the petition, even though it suggests support for it, because they didn't take an active role in promoting the opposition would not necessarily be the conflict of interest. Um, again, personal interest or animosity towards a a matter, and that's the the second one, it, the personal interest doesn't come up a lot. Um, but the animosity, the perceived animosity or bias for or against is what comes up most enter, most often, and so again, so not every interest disqualifies, you have to have an interest in the matter, or particularly personal relationship in relation to the matter. Um, and it has to be at a level that it would influence your decision-making. And so, that is where it gets to be really challenged, because if you feel, and and you're the judges of this, you're you're the ones that really have to be the judges of this individually and then as a group, as to whether you feel that personal interest, you know, does bias you in some way, you know, for or against, a bias can be positive, um, not, it's not always a negative type of a situation. But the thing about these two is this is not, there is not a bright line rule on this, it's all fact-based. So that's why it has to be addressed on a case-by-case basis, and my suggestion is you think, I don't know if this is a conflict, and and I've had mul- mul- multiple, multiple conversations with elected officials about this in terms of they started with, I don't know if this is a conflict or not, I love those conversations, cause it means you haven't made a decision, you're thinking about it, you're being thoughtful, and you're trying to vet the information you have against what your obligations are. So let's have that conversation, and I can help you with that. Alright, gift ban, super simple, um, you can't receive anything that really has a value of more than seventy-five dollars. So, you know, it it, you can't like avoid, if you go out to to lunch or dinner or something with your friends or whatever, and they wanna pick up the tab, you can't say, oh my god, is this going to be construed as a gift? The challenge will be, I presume you won't have done this because you've been through this training, you didn't talk about county business or anything like that. But it it does, there is a a threshold in terms of the value in order to, you can't accept anything that has a value of more than seventy-five dollars. And I just, I, hmm?
I thought it was fifty.
This was just changed, I think it was twenty, I thought, well, when I thought it's confirmed, it's seventy-five dollars changed, it was increased, yeah, cause you can't
It was like fifty-three.
It's seventy-five now. Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Do much anything.
Inflation.
Um, but anything, the other thing about this issue though too, is that, again, it's the appearance of a propriety. My suggestion is try to avoid it, cause the last thing you want is to have somebody have a complaint to the independent ethics committee, and all of a sudden, that's gonna be all over the place, oh, they're being, you know, and they'll say, they're being investigated by the ethics committee for, you know, moving this.
Talents.
Yes, talents, so.
And the I E C is the one they kept warning us about, or the C C I, and.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And you wanna avoid it at all cost.
Which is, use multiple acronyms in one sentence, starting with some of the commissioner.
Yeah. Well, in that, but it it's a cliche, but as elected officials, you should know, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Someone wants to take you to lunch, especially business or the related, you know, they're involved with another organization or something, just be cautious about what your parents will be, and also because this is such a small town, we have so few restaurants where you're likely to go, there will be people seeing you having lunch with this individual. And if they are the executive director or or president of a board at a local group or something like that, the presumption is going to be that you're there talking to that organization, not because you're friends with that person and associated. My other suggestion too is, in those situations, you know, there's safety in numbers. So, perhaps try to limit your one-on-ones when you go, you know, be, you know, different people, maybe not all from the same organization or something like that, so that it it gives a better impression of the social activity versus that you're meeting with these folks. Um, few ex- exceptions, you know, these are like, somebody wants to give you a reward because you've done something that they feel is great for their organization or for the community or something like that. Um, unsolicited stuff, yeah, I know, you can thank your family.
Oh, there are two examples, I appreciate it.
I know. Um, it, you know, unsolicited stuff, you know, if somebody wants to gift you a subscription to a magazine that they think will help inform your your uh work as a commissioner, there's nothing to, you know, nothing but admission to cost of food beverages at a reception meal meeting before the county recipient is asked to appear to speak or answer a question as part of a scheduled program. So again, you know, you might, um, we've done this in the past, sometimes the friends who turn like, so ask if the commissioner will come down and get an update, then they might be having a potluck or or something like that, there's no problem with you doing that, okay, that is, that is fine.
Look, I've, so I've had, like, say a nonprofit wants you to come to their annual gala or something, and it's a two hundred dollar admission, and you're not speaking, that hits here.
This is the example they gave.
You have to speak, yeah, yes.
Yeah, and he, his commissioner, it was like a hundred and fifty dollars to sit at this person's table.
Mm-hmm.
This person was a developer, and when she, when they went to the court, he said it was just a junk show.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter that she paid back the money, it doesn't matter that like, they assessed more fines and.
Right.
Use it, yeah.
And also the the woman who was invited to the inauguration.
Yeah.
Yeah, she she asked about that.
Yeah, I thought I found that one interesting, I was like, oh, you know, like, where's the harm in that? Oh, okay, because it costs a lot to get into that normally.
Yes. Yes.
But, you know, and I was like, invited by Hicken Hoover to go, and so it's like, even our own elected officials are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I swear to this a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Hit like drives, back plans.
Yeah.
Is he?
Sucker. He was, he was using his restaurant too for Trump style for meetings and.
Yeah. Yes, exactly, and this is just exactly what we were just talking about, in terms of uh gift ban except for travel, if you're scheduled to deliver a speech or represent the state or local government, provided that the nonprofit organization receives less than five percent of its funding from the for-profit organization or entities there, so, and that's something you will not know in advance, so my suggestion is accepting, you know, free travel and conference fees and that type of thing. Try to turn it into something where you're gonna be talking, or you'll present on behalf of the county or something like that, so that you can at least justify that this was uh subject to that exception.
What what's an example of that, Chris, sorry, of us? If you could go back there.
Um, well, and here's one thing that that I'll suggest you need to be cautious about. If there are organizations that have very partisan views about certain issues, um, and if, as y'all were just talking about, this conference or group meeting, people are paying a lot of money to be there. Way beyond the value of what it's gonna cost to host those people to be there, so it's essentially a fundraiser. That's where you need to be cautious about accepting that stuff. And also keep in mind, you know, the other thing too is, if you participate in partisan groups or whatever like that, that's fine, you don't have to stop doing that, obviously, because you know, that's that's just a part of, um, being elected official sometimes as well as the parties that you may affiliate with and such. But my suggestion is, if it's not something that you're there as a representative of the county to essentially report one county interest that your colleagues have said, hey, we'd like you to go do this, pay for it yourself and make sure that any comments you make, you practice with, I'm here as a private individual, my opinions don't necessarily reflect those of like county government, and that type of thing. So I mean, it doesn't mean you can't participate, the the thing you have to be cautious about is when they want you to come in the role of a commissioner, and they want you to to give opinions that are not necessarily ones that have been vetted by the board, that are not the position or the statement that been enforced by the whole board. That's. Okay, so if these conflicts are shown to exist, um, it can end up resulting in you know, so I filed a complaint with the ethics committee or courts, and it could come back and say, we're gonna overturn what y'all did. Um, if it's something where you went outside of your defined role as an elected official, um, where you acted in a way that is either in violation of the law or the code or contrary to public interest, you could face personal liability through civil lawsuits or a breach of public trust or malfeasance. Um, you can also potentially face criminal charges and penalties, um, and unfortunately, we do have experience with that in this community, um, with prior elected officials, so it's not unheard of. Fortunately, at this point in time, we have a district attorney that isn't real excited about pursuing those type of claims in most interests, in most instances, so normally it would likely need to be something pretty egregious. But it doesn't have to be, so that's that's something to to keep in. And also, you know, the negative publicity, um, you don't. And also, you know, the negative publicity, um, you don't want one instance of perhaps flawed judgment to color your whole tenure as a commissioner and all the good work that you will do uh, through negative publicity, but also, um, and this is something that bubbles up every other administration or something, recall petitions to have you removed from office. You know, you, you know, you and other elected officials, the only, you know, way for you to be removed from office is through a recall petition, you know. You can't, like, two of your colleagues can't fire you from being a commissioner. So, um, that, these are just things you don't want to have to face. So it requires sometimes a lot of thought. If you're prone to speaking from the hip, you know, take a breath before you do. Make sure you're thoughtful about any comments you make because whatever you talk about now, it's gonna be perceived as you're talking as a county commissioner. Cautious. Uh, yeah, avoiding trouble. Just training, um, and again, um, you know, proactively seek advice. Any comments, questions, concerns, always I have an open door. You have my cell phone number, texts, email, please call first. If it's, if it's something super urgent, if you call me and you get my voicemail, please leave a message, but then also text me and you can just put in a text, nine-one-one. Meaning you have an urgent matter that you need to talk to me about and if I'm in a meeting and I see that come through, I will step out and call you back. So please, if you think, if you, if your guts telling you, maybe I should talk to Chris about this before, and you call me and say, well darn, I didn't get her, get in touch with her, let me go on and do it, please, take the time. There's nothing so urgent that it can't wait a few minutes for me to call you back. So just, you know, use the resources you have. Not just me, you've got other staff members and stuff that are here specifically to help you navigate the way you do it. So, alright, that's I think mine for this morning session. Comments, questions, concerns, other scenarios you wanna talk about, what you, for, which, and I'll, I'll just share, um, all of the county attorneys are kinda going through this with their new commissioners and for the last, um, couple of, well, since the election essentially and y'all started attending all these trainings, put on about these conversations. Almost every day we're getting one of these. Okay, so my commissioner just said they heard at. And so if at any time, there's information that you were given at your other conferences and trainings and stuff and it seems inconsistent with either what I'm telling you or what the staff's telling you, please ask, please ask, so that we can talk through it and figure out why there's a disconnect. There may be certain circumstances where the best practice is what's presented at these general conferences and a lot of times, there's general conferences or tailored more to the larger communities, if you will. Um, don't hesitate to reach out to your staff and say, okay, I heard this is, you know, C T S I or C C I or whatever, um, but I'm hearing something different from you. Why? So that we can have that conversation.
There's no one-size-fits-all approach to, you know, like, there's always gonna be a case-by-case.
No. No. Absolutely.
Assessment.
Absolutely.
We'll say just, so you all know, like, um, we also allow staff to go to public meetings to testify in front of you or city council or others. We do ask them to represent themselves rather than the county unless the V O C C has given direction that that's what their stance is. Um, so just FYI, see staff in here during public comment or whatnot, that is something we allow them to do, but they are certainly representing themselves. Um, and that if they do represent the county, um, they've been given explicit directions to do, so.
So for example, like this morning at the community coffee, would it have been prudent for us to, when we talk about kind of our goals for the upcoming or things that are, you know, important to us? Um, should we kinda clarify before we make those statements? For me personally, this is what I'd like to see. Okay.
I, I would recommend that, um, because if you don't, the perception's going to be that you are speaking on behalf of the county.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I think, and part of that too is reminding community members, friends, right? When you're talking and things, you're like, one commissioner doesn't make a decision. The board makes a decision, yeah. And you all three, of course, have your own individual perspectives and purviews and goals and things like that, but it's, it's the board, you know, that does it.
Mm-hmm.
Has the staff, um, come to us to ask to go to a meeting ever or does that always come like top-down?
It goes through me. So, um, you know, for, for example, for city planning and zoning, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, various staff were asked about, um, providing, um, testimony and, and support of the homeless shelter, right?
Mm-hmm.
My guidance was to talk about every, the engagement that they've had with the bridge program and with the advocates.
Mm.
Um, and, you know, factual things of, you know, if it's experience and wraparound, they deal with homelessness, it was experienced at O E M. Um, you know, the impacts that it can have and dangers, uh, you know, like weather dangers to, to folks in our community. So it's, it's generally meant to be more of, as like that factual, basically.
Subject matter experts.
Yeah, this is what we did or the subject matter experts, this is the advice we provided.
Yeah.
Um, and I think you guys have seen, you know, some of, uh, previous board meetings, I think that you guys attended, right? And staff are always welcome to these meetings. They are residents and citizens here as well, so they are entitled to come. Um, but they'll come and they'll say, you know, hi, I'm Tim. I am the county manager, however, I am speaking as in my personal capacity.
Yes.
Sometimes it's hard for folks to, uh, you know, both, uh, either the board or counselor, school district to differentiate that, but that's practice.
But like an example, like the C U P for the shelter, if it, what I understood from you, Tim, is that because the board of health had not determined that a priority, there was no direction from the county for people to go from public health or human services to go and advocate for that to happen. And because we were in a weird transition, there was like nobody, we have, we don't even exist as a water health yet.
Right.
So, but in the future, say this had happened in June and, uh, like Julia at public health knew that, um, knew that the advocates were going to be going in front of the city, is that a time where she, where she would bring up, hey, this is really important? Would the board of health let me advocate for this? Like how does that conversation go? Does that ever come up?
It, yes, recommendations from staff do come up of like pertinent issues, you know, in the community. Um, or their, uh, you know, staff's recommendation based on their skill sets and research and evidence and all of that to, to make a recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
Um, but that also writes you, if it is a priority of the board, it's great to have the public health director or any county director go, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What's more impactful is for three commissioners to show up to a meeting and say, this is a priority.
Yeah, cool.
Um.
Cool, awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, you know, as a board, you can take positions on that, you know, to support initiatives or that type of thing.
Uh-huh.
Even if it's not yours, you know, if it's not, if it's within the city or whatever, the board as a whole can say, hey, we support this or.
Cool. That makes sense. We're such a small community.
But you need to make sure you do it as a board and, and not typically, you know, yes, you can appear and speak, um, on that issue if you like, but if the board's going to issue a position on it, my suggestion would be to do that in writing.
Right.
We're all three of you signing off showing that it's, it's the board's position.
Nice.
Other comments, questions, concerns, anything else on those topics you wanna explore? Or you, you having, you know, I'm on a training, I like, and I always, I always, I get into these trainings and I see the look, you'll say something, you'll see the look on somebody's face and they'll be like, oh. Where it's like, yes, you wanna step into it. You're not gonna be perfect. You're not perfect. You're human beings. You're not gonna be perfect. So it's okay. Um, if you inadvertently make mistake, it's okay. My suggestion though is don't keep it to yourself because the last thing you want is then do you be blindsided at some public meeting and somebody comes and says, well, I knew you did such and such and your other colleagues, nobody else knows about it. We can help, help you navigate that, um, much better. You just say, it has to happen and what I can do, what I can arrange to work on that.
Would you recommend if people are on boards, just as them as individuals, to step off of those during their tenure?
It depends on the nature of the board. Um, you know, everybody wears ten hats in Leadville and so, you know, becoming elected official doesn't mean you have to summon us on from nonprofit service or that type of thing. But it, if you're a nonprofit board, especially if it is a true nonprofit, it's gonna have bylaws and protocols and stuff like that. They're gonna find, it should have a conflict of interest policy similar as to what, what you've seen today, to where you'll have to analyze at what level you can be involved. And sometimes if it's something that's going to come before the V O C C on a regular basis, it would probably be prudent not to continue to serve in a leadership role with that. Doesn't mean you can't volunteer at their events or that type of thing, but if you're, you know, a director on a nonprofit board or something like that, and they are going to recurrently come before the board to ask for support or whatever, or we end up crossways between the board and that nonprofit, you probably should consider whether it's in the best interest of that nonprofit for you to continue to participate, as well as in the best interest of the county, if you're gonna end up having to recuse yourself in every manner before you
Right.
on that nonprofit. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Cause we can't all just disappear from our volunteers.
How about spouses?
You know, it, it's one of those things where gift bands and that type of stuff, they can't give them to your spouses to you, that would still be presumed as a gift to you. Um, but your spouse being involved in other organizations, as long as she doesn't introduce herself as, I am so-and-so, Commissioner Lee's wife, so as to try to influence their role through, through you as a physician.
Right.
So no, they can't. We can't afford for everybody who's brave enough to step up in their ranks and get elected to suddenly disappear from other aspects of public life. We need y'all to stay engaged in the community. Tim, was there anything else for this morning? I think I ended a little bit earlier, but, um, didn't schedule it, but I'm doubting by a complaint. Especially some folks who didn't have enough coffee, they might need some more.
Please pause for just a second. I do have to.
Yes, yes.
Um, Elaine, Elaine, she's sort of out there.
Oh, I think she's lost.
I think I called her, I don't remember now. I noticed that doors opened, those masks. She was there, she was walking in with her, then slipped on the chair.
Tricky one is five.
There's that.
The date. This was the nine AM session.
That was just.
Yeah.
And I was worried about missing one and.
Yeah, I looked, this whole window here, it's got all these things, our, our calendar, Jean's calendar.
January is not gonna last long. It's been scary since. Well, I have two false.